Thank you for bringing us in this morning. Please guide us with your wisdom as we address issues affecting our county. Please take care of our road department as they are out today due to the snow we sent us last night. And please protect all those who are in service to our country, first responders, police department, our men and women services. And again, please guide us with your wisdom as we continue to do your efforts to keep our county moving forward. Amen.
Okay, microphones back on. Madam Clerk, have a roll call.
Bow.
Yes, here.
Current.
Here.
Freeling.
President.
Harrison.
Here.
Hinkleman.
Here.
Majerick.
Here.
Pitchford.
President.
Ballarat.
Here.
Werfel.
Here.
Yarborough.
Elliot.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 11 present, one absent.
Thank you. Minutes from last week. Moved by Freeling. Is there support? It's supported by Pitchford. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, have we communications?
Yes, you received four communications. An email communication from the Baton Harbor City Clerk Tiffany Moore on behalf of Baton Harbor City Mayor Marcus Mohammed requesting support from the BOC and the Berrien Bus to engage with the TCATA Board for the Contracting of Services to meet the basic transportation needs of the Baton Harbor community, received on November 19th. An email communication from Cornerstone Alliance announcing Marla Snyder as the new president and CEO, received on November 20th. An email communication from Development Director Maureen Oventon from Flowers Early Learning, formerly Tri-County Head Start inviting you to join them for a tour of their Baton Harbor DEC classrooms. The tour is scheduled for Monday, December 9th at 8:30 a.m., received on November 20th. An email communication from Deputy Director Teresa Greshack, 20-city area transportation authority regarding a letter sent from Baton Harbor Mayor requesting engagement with TCATA to cover insurance needs, received on November 20th. That's all for communications.
Thank you. Speaking of communications, makes me think we all communicate by means of different things, including phones. As you know, we've been doing something to help with communications via the internet around the county. If it's okay with the board, I'll briefly pause the agenda to recognize Jerry Mast, Galene Township Supervisor, who's been quite involved as Terry knows and Jim and Ray, because Galene, I think, is up and running now. Not quite, but soon will be. And this is something, as you know, that five, six years ago was just conceptual. And now it's happening. We're getting internet out and about in the county, good quality, high-speed internet. And Supervisor Mast has asked for a moment to just come in and thank us for what we're doing. Jerry?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Elliott. You've kind of teed this all off. I thought I was going to have to do my own cold start on this. But so, yes, we've had our conduit installed this summer. We've had the fiber pulled through it. A lot of the service drops to the houses have occurred, including myself. And we've been waiting on two things for probably, what, maybe 60 days or more. One of them is the crossing over the Amtrak, which I'm not sure whether is in Galene, not sure whether it happened. And so that'll connect the south to the north end of town. The other one is power to a pedestal. And that actually, I believe, happened last Friday. I haven't received official communication from that. But so, we're very, 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 very close. I've got to count my varies because I keep posting on Facebook to the community how much closer we're getting and adding another vary each time. So, I wanted to come up today because, as Chairman Elliott said, this has been an enormous lift on a lot of people throughout the county administration and the Board of Commissioners as well. And so, at the risk of missing somebody, I want to name off a few people who've had some really key roles in this. And the first is Dan Fettie. And Dan kind of kicked this off in early, late 2021, early 2022. And he kind of designed a process at that point of trying how we were going to, how county was going to divvy out the funds that you had allocated out of the ARPA money. Kim Fedison has also had a lot of a role behind the scenes throughout the project. She kind of kept the website organized, a lot of data that she was, so very ministerial things, but yet very important. And then Lex Winans and Helen DeMarsh. I'm still mourning the loss of Helen DeMarsh with her being gone. But they've done so much with geocoding, which I don't understand. They've done all really fancy dashboards, made the website look really nice. So, a lot of technical work on them. I know Chris Swihart was involved with some of the things behind the scenes. On that, I know kind of kept Administrator Deset in line on some things early on and throughout. So, there's also some great partners in this project. Chris Shearer with DCS, John Engelhoff from Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. They both had a lot of technical expertise and thought into this. I'm always amazed that John, he and I think on totally different sides of the brain, but yet I always, after he says something, I'm like, why didn't I think of that? And we've all in all, we've got a great partner, MEC ISP, throughout, throughout, that was selected by the state with the Robyn Grant. Ironically, I started with their wild blue satellite service in the mid 2000s, which was great then, going from dial-up, not so great a few years later. But I feel like we're going to be future-proof with MEC. They've always had great customer service. So, I think we've got, that was very favorable for us as well. Then, for the County Broadband Committee itself affectionately called BC BIT, Commissioner Bell and Commissioner Curran have been there through the process the last few years and have been very supportive, asking good questions, providing guidance along the way. And so, we have to think back a little bit how this started in 2022. There was sort of the path that Dan Fettie had laid out. And so about mid-year, there was basically, mid-year 2022, there was a sort of a pivot, I guess, and sort of a thought process. And I just would describe it, go big or go home. And so, basically, we, the committee changed path, listened to some concerns, which I think takes a lot of leadership and willingness to hear people out. And so, and that rests with Commissioner, well, Chairman Freeling and Administrator Deset, that were willing to listen to the communities, try and figure out how they go, go to its, BC BIT's core mission of edge-to-edge, top-to-bottom broadband throughout the county. So, which, it worked. We got a, what, $56 million project kicked off. So, I can't think of any other way of saying we've had great leadership in the county without those two individuals and their undying support for this and, and just burning desire to make it happen. And then also along the way, I've been subjected to many dad jokes from Administrator Deset, which have totally caught me off guard. And I also remember our very first conversation with Commissioner Freeling about the word fail, like first attempt in life. I hope I got it right, because that's how I've been. But I have thought about that so many times in my personal and professional life since then. And I've been, I've also been involved with a lot of projects of maybe similar magnitude in effort and cost at work in my professional life. But this project has been so fulfilling because it's such a tangible result and such a meaningful benefit to Galene and surrounding communities. And I think it's actually maybe one of the biggest, like, cost investments in the community. The other one was maybe the sewer project in 1978, which isn't quite as exciting as broadband in many ways. So, I wanted to take some time, sorry for going over my two minutes, but I wanted to come up and say what a great display of teamwork this has been. I've been proud to be associated with this. The efforts will set us off for many years to come. And so, thank you again to all the Commissioners for supporting this project and this investment. Thank you.
If you weren't during public comments, you were invited to speak. And Galene has been well-served over the years by having you as Township Supervisor. As you know, we started this process, actually, I think, in 2018 in the Administration Committee, and then carried it forward into 2019, and started the blueprint and then the construction. And literally, we're constructing it now. And it's, it's the dawn of a high-speed information technology age for Berrien County. And been happy to have your involvement from the beginning. And I, I think Township residents owe you a debt of gratitude for everything you've done. Jerry, you're welcome to stick around if you have to go. Okay, great. We're going to go now to public comments about resolutions. And that includes the added resolution ending in 1401. Thanks to Commissioner Curran for checking the numbers. And then that changed to two to a one. And that's the one about the equalization apportionment report, the amendment to it, to reflect the millage that passed on the election day, on the 5th. So, anything you want to say about the consent calendar, as well as the added resolution? This would be the time.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Hayden.
Count payable check run report. There's one on here for $4 million. I don't get where that money went. No, you guys just put that on here. You add up all the checks and then you say, okay, $4,473,000. Where'd the money go? Where'd it go? And why are you paying that?
The vice chair will respond.
So, those are the weekly bills that the Finance Committee reviews. There's a long check run, and over 2 million of that in one charge goes to the state of Michigan. Other are charges to some of the different school districts, the libraries, and that's what that adds up to, being the $4 million mark. We do.
How much would you buy a pocket?
Zero.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, including the added resolution 1401? Moved by Bell. Is there support? Supported by Volrath. Is there a discussion? Julie?
I just would like to, I was gone last week. Appreciate the support that I was able to ask some questions regarding the budget. And I would like to see us consider as a board, whether it be through PHS or through Finance, a new procedure or policy on how to handle the budget starting in 2025 going forward. I think an eight-day process for this board, with our primary duty being the budget, an eight-day process, three hours of the committee meeting on Wednesday, to the 20-minute, I know you were under a timeline by our chair, Doug, in the committee of the whole last week. And then one week later, we're approving a budget of, you know, $250 million. I think that process should last longer with this board than eight days. And I don't know what that process looks like, but I'd like to see us maybe as a board come up with what that process could be. Not looking to go back to that three-day budget hearing. I don't think that's productive either. But for the 2025 and beyond, I think we should consider a better process for the budget. That's my comment.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else wish to be heard? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Current.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman.
Yes.
Majerick.
Yes.
Ott.
Yep.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Ballarat.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 11 ayes.
Thank you. A quick postscript, if I may. Supervisor Mast's term is ending. I hope, I know you have a busy schedule, but I hope you will entertain some continuing involvement at the county level. We always have boards and commissions that need good people. And Jerry, if you have time, please consider that. We'd be happy to have you. Thank you again. Committee reports. Mr. Chair of PHS, are you ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So, we met this morning. We had a resolution to approve, which we did. This is, we're accepting the remonumentation grant. And we
Jill, head of the Parks and Recreation Department, talking about a number of options and issues for Silver Beach. And so that was a good discussion. Then we had the privilege of having our chairman and administrator come in and we talked through a number of issues and, you know, that was a very productive discussion. So that basically concludes our, my report.
Thank you. Questions for PHS? Mr. Chair of Admin.
Thank you, Matt. First in to see us this morning was Don Trail. He talked to us about the deferred maintenance list. He's whittling away the list, making some headway. After Don was our public defender, Scott Sanford. And Alex would like to report out on that.
Okay, as Jim said, Scott came in to give us his update and they did finish their final financial status report. Their office was 500 and roughly 40,000 below budget projections. Their caseload numbers and Niles all exceeded the MIDC limits, but they are also down five attorneys. Their fourth quarter arraignment were 1,500 plus. And finally, they still do not have access to the case management system, but I know that is an ongoing project and that they are working on doing that. That was report from Scott.
Thank you, Alex. After Scott, Mark Heiliger and Dan Fett was in to see us, talk to us about the Lakeview Trail. There is a resolution 2386 that will be coming for us. This deals with easements that they had to secure in order to complete the trail. So you'll see that in the way of a resolution. Brian and Mac were in to see us. And then we do have some resolutions for you the next time we get together. Resolution ending in 2380, this is a, to accept a contract between the trial court and Ms. Leslie Steinberg for her services for next year. Resolutions 84 and 85, these are renewing contracts between the family court and Riverwood for the services that they provide. And that is our report.
Thank you. Questions for admin? Mr. Vice Chair of Finance?
Thank you, Matt. To be brief, we had, we approved the minutes for both the special meeting that we had on the 13th and then the meeting that we had on the 14th. We have one contract modification that we did for the road department. It was on Harvard Road. And that change was $97,000 and some change to an, our previously awarded contract of 615,671.55. And that was for the trench in Wyden on Harvard Road with some additional work that had to be done. So we approved that. We had a one for a waiver and that was a waiver for the juvenile, juvenile, juvenile center. And we had a difficulty in obtaining bids for some social work services in there. And in the past, we actually bid this twice. We had three bidders, the first time that we did it years ago. And none of those three bidders were qualified. We bid it again. Two bidders found one to be qualified and the lowest bid and brought that individual in. And they would like to continue with that. And so that's what the waiver was, that's what the waiver was for. The resolutions, we paid the bills, the other resolutions, we've already passed. One was for the, for the millage approvals that the board had to do for Glean. Glean Township, Fire Millage and the Berrion Springs Library. So we did that. And we also all talked, and I think you guys all got the same update that we had about the build out from Bainbridge Township. So I won't go into that, but you guys got all the information for that.
Thank you. We'll move into commissioner reports and we'll go clockwise, John.
No report, thank you. The only thing I have to report is I attended the mental authority meeting with Commissioner Majerik. And we got an update from our substance use disorder director here in Ben Harbor. So she gave us a few updates and we also had our annual board governance and compliance educational session following the, the board meeting. And that's all I have to report on.
No report. Quick report, I attended the United Civic Monuments Project unveiling for the two statues of Martin Luther King in Ben Harbor and St. Joseph. Got a chance to meet Martin Luther King III and hear him speak, which was, you know, it's just mind-blowing to see a couple of generations down of the man himself. And the beautiful statues, I implore everybody to go and see them if you get a chance, take pictures with them, try to have meetings there. Think it's going to be a great staple of the community moving forward. That is my report.
On Tuesday, I attended the Nuclear Regulatory Commission Government to Government briefing that was held at LMC. And the gentleman who put that on is here in the audience today. After that, I attended the Berrion County Historical Association Board Meeting where they're talking about the projects for 2025. That's my report.
Monday, I went up to Lansing, we had our MAC Finance, excuse me, and general government meeting. And we had a presentation by Mike Birchmeyer and Rachel Frisch, who are CPAs and with Raymond. And they gave us a presentation on Public Act 152 of 2001, which is an 80/20 split in employer, employee insurance costs, healthcare and the challenges in that. And they gave a real nice presentation. It's kind of scary when you see the numbers keep rising the way they are. Tuesday, we were at the college for a presentation to elected officials on the opening of the Palisades Plant. And then they had a public hearing the next night. I'm not sure how that went, but that was a good presentation. It was well-attended. We had probably 50, 60 people. Our whole EOC department was there. It was kind of cool when they did introductions. Berrion County EOC. And then yesterday, I was a little late, but I made it to our first materials management planning committee. We had a regular order of business. We had bylaws every reviewed and approved. And set a schedule for next year. It's going to be third Monday in Duwawjack for now because our new leader, the chair of that is from Duwawjack. So they're going to hold, host the meetings wherever our chair is located. So for the time being, we're going to be in Duwawjack on Mondays. And that's going to be the start of this very interesting journey. And we had, I think, 1817, 1817 members on this panel yesterday. And it was a room probably twice as big as, so I couldn't really see the other people on the other side of the room very well, but it was very well-attended. At least I could hear people talking and, and there was a lot of good discussion. So it's, it's, I look forward to being involved with it, even though it's on a Monday, which is another one of my bad days, but I, I think we can make it work. So, um, where are we at today?
I attended the Parks meeting yesterday of note. Madeline Bertrand is going to be 40 years old next year. So Park's been with us for 40 years. That's my report.
No report?
Well, last Thursday, we had Brownfield. And we talked about all the projects that are going on. One of them, of course, I was concerned with modern plastics. It's got a little setbacks, but it is looking to move forward. I don't have any particular information on that. Also Riverwood with Commissioner Bell. And then also the supped, supped board, which is a substance use board. And they went over, we, every year they take a high school and, or high schools in each county and they ask them how they're doing with drugs and everybody, it's anonymous tests that they take. And then we're going back to 2012, drinking 22% of high school students drank. In 2024, it's down to 9.7. Binge drinking 12.2 were in 2012 and it's down to 2024, 5.7. And it's been coming down on all of these a lot. Any RX drugs, prescription drugs. 6.1 is in, actually, they just started taking this one in 2018. 6.1 in 2018 and it's down to 3.2 in 2024. Marijuana, you would think it went up. It didn't. 15.7 in 2012. It's down to 10.2 in 2024 and it's been steadily coming down. The big one is tobacco. Tobacco in 2012 was 14% of students took tobacco. Now it's down to 0.9, not even 1%.
Wow.
And we didn't have vaping back in 2012, but we did in 2018. 24% were vaping and that has come down 2024 to 10%. And they don't, nobody gave any reasons why these are coming down. It was just noted. And that's, that's my report.
Try to be as brief as possible. I want to also recognize, I know we have Jerry Mast here in, in the audience and the service that he had provided to his township. Those that are coming after have big shoes to fill. You've always taken to heart the individuals that you've served and it's been much appreciated to be able to serve with you. I also want to recognize Suzanne Renton, who is the clerk for Orenoco Township. She did not seek reelection. She had been serving for 23 years as the clerk. And so they had a reception for her yesterday. So I attended that and gave my well wishes to her from myself in the county. I'm hoping her the best in that way. I too also attended the Brownfield redevelopment meeting on Thursday and Commissioner Majerik did highlight some of those things. Modern plastic is one of those that even with the $2.6 million grant that has been received for cleaning up that property. They're, they are working through all of the phases to, to make certain that remediation happens. The one thing that I want to bring to the attention of this board is that the Brownfield Authority had made recommendation to push forward a new Brownfield redevelopment plan that will be coming before this board for consideration for a tractor supply company location in the Benton Township area. So that will be coming soon. And there's a process where it's a public hearing for consideration. But outside of that, I will yield the rest of my time. We'll do that in other business if you'd like, or do you want me to do it now? Okay.
I'll do it now.
Okay. Sounds great. I had been contacted by a dear friend who happens to be in the audience. His name is Alan Barker. And as Commissioner Curran had recognized, he does work for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission in his day job. But he also is a passionate volunteer and contributor to the community for Lake Township, your jurisdiction. And he reached out to me to see if he could come to share with us this project that he and his daughter Lily have been working on for over a year.
The plan's been about here, yes.
Yeah, I won't steal the thunder. But he wanted to just share with us related to first responders and showing appreciation for them. And it's timely because it wasn't what, two weeks ago? But the first responder National Day of Recognition had happened. So I will turn it over to you, Alan, if you would like to address the board.
Good morning. I really feel honored to be here in front of this leadership group. I have a, I was born and raised here in Berrion County and I enjoy, I've been around a lot for the, for my jobs and stuff, you know, but always landed back here. Again, my name is Alan Barker and I live in Bridger, Michigan, Lake Township. This project was something personally that I was, 25 years ago, I was our first, I was a fireman, volunteer fireman for city of Bridger for about 22 years and stuff. And my passion lies with the first responders. Incredible, incredible ties with individuals that come to you when you have need. So my daughter is, like Terry said, my daughter is Ms. Bridgeman, Lily Barker. She gives her crown up in Saturday. So we worked together since about July or so. And Sheriff Hyatt has been instrumental in helping with the police law enforcement side of it. Chief Myers from Orenoco Township was a fire association. So we were able to get these 20 coins in first responders' hands and they carried them in service. And then what we did was we recollect them back again. So so each one of these coins was in some service role with a first responder, be it law enforcement, be it medical, be it fire and stuff, so across the county. So really what I'm here to do is, is that I want to show this off. It was a personal dream for me, probably more than my daughter was, but she's an incredible, beautiful person. So she hangs in there with Dad and Spag alley. But really it comes down to the point of understanding the individuals you have in this county. The, the people that when you make a request, they step forward. An individual that will take a coin and carry it with them during their public service across the communities and stuff. And a lot of people say, you know, well, what communities did it? All first responders did it. Some might have carried it, some might not have carried it, but the tribute is for the past, the currently and the future to come and stuff. So they're, in my mind, this is equal and I'm very proud to be part of this, this county, this community, Spag alley. And I appreciate the chance to come here and stuff. And again, it's a dream come true. It's been a long time coming and I don't know what else to say about how important it is to be part of, of a county or communities across the county. Such that just incredible support for someone that wants to do a project. So again, I thank you very much for the time to, to be here. This is going to end up initially in Lake Township. So before, for their hall there for the fire station. Again, thank you so much. I'll answer any questions you have. Anything. Oh, absolutely. Thank you. You're very welcome.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Barker? Thank you, sir, for taking the time to join us. Did you have anything to report?
I would like to just say thank you very much to Jerry. So PC bit meets once a, once a month and has for years now. And I can say with out of doubt, we have a strong crowd that shows up for those meetings. And Jerry is one of the absolute best as far as being in attendance, being actively engaged, having good feedback for the committee members and then also being willing to push for additional information on behalf of the ISPs. Jerry, thank you for being an engaged working member. Very much appreciated. To the other board, as you talk about folks phasing out of their role as public servants, I do want to point out just one more name to, to be thoughtful of. So if you have dealt with Lake Township at all, Bob Clark is just completing his tenure and I think they had a going away party for him, I think on Tuesday of this week, possibly on Monday. But Bob is someone that I've worked with a lot through the Friends Group for Berrion County Trails. But more recently on a tax appeal process for the DC Cook Plant. So we got to spend a lot of time at the township hall. Last thing for this board is just to brag on one of your commissioners. So your equalization director has actively worked to secure agreements with all of the townships for the oblique imaging. One that we were struggling with was Coloma Township, just had a crossed wire or two. And we put Commissioner Volrath on it and he attacked it like one of the dogs that ends up in the animal services. He attacked it. He was extremely helpful. So Dave, thank you very much. It was the last agreement we needed to get done. Warren was at his wit's end and you got it done. So thank you, sir. Yep, you made him happy. Those are my comments, sir.
Thank you. He has to tell two jokes though, when he comes next time, not, not just one. So, okay, we'll go to general public comments. Anything under the sun in two minutes or less? Name in town, name in town, if you wish to opine.
Elder Major.
Yes, sir. We haven't seen you in a while.
You know, I kind of resent that. You know, I kind of resent that. He gets it. Put your stuff there. Hey, you guys are looking at it. I didn't know where it is. I can't see it. You're going to get raided. Maybe I'll go over there. You can hide it, but it's put back there or something. But that's against them. That's another reason why people don't want to come down here. You know, you guys think you own us. Just want to be working for us. Wouldn't you start showing us some pride or some stuff that we can use? Like, I'm going to photograph up there. The one up there is about on the outside. The one up there is about two or three years old. But next week, maybe somebody take a photograph, put it up there. Now I put the schedule of the meetings up here too, like I asked one before. No, you don't want to do that. So that might, might, might bring more people in here. Now I come in here with winter coming on. Now where do I hang my coat? I said, you guys are hiding just up in that closet right there. It's an install. You're doing that on purpose. People's out of here. A lot of times they're the only one here complaining. Well, you guys, you guys don't seem to get it. Get the hell out of this room. This is too small. No, your county commissioners. You're not hanging your township commitment. Officials or whatever. No, we got, we got a rack or a coat, a rack or coats. You guys don't have one here.
Thank you, Mr. Pelzer. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, that concludes general public comments. We'll go to other business. Anyone have any? Wanted to follow up on the, the communication that the clerk mentioned from the city of Benton Harbor concerning Takata. I think you all received a copy of the letter from the mayor of Benton Harbor, which was addressed to me, but really just on behalf of the board. My suggestion would be that we acknowledge receipt of that letter as was requested. And if the administrator would, wouldn't mind doing that and to indicate that we are taking the, the letter under advisement. Is that okay? All right. Then announcements and reminders. One reminder is don't leave because we have a closed session. But the other reminder is we're not here because of Thanksgiving. And not only will we not be here on Thursday, we're closed on Friday. So for the, are we going to do anything after the closed session?
We're approving the closed session.
Anything else?
Well, I'll ask for a motion.
Okay, so Julie, there's your answer. We, we will reconvene the open session to approve minutes from the prior closed session on September 12. And then to take action based on the recommendation of council during the closed session, which is involving pending litigation as shown on page two of the agenda. So we, we will come back in to approve minutes from a couple of months ago and to presumably approve whatever corporate counsel is recommending about this pending litigation that we're going to be talking about shortly. Other than that, there won't be any other business.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
Given the, the very brief to-do list, once you return into open session, I would request permission to shut down the Zoom to allow staff to, to get to other work.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Then we're going to shut down.
I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that, please?
We're going to turn the Zoom off once we go into closed session and we're not going to turn it back on when we go back into open session because we're only going to be in open session long enough to approve the minutes from the September 12 closed session, which was the last time we went into closed session. To vote on giving corporate counsel authority to do what he's going to recommend during the closed session. And then if you're still around, to wish you happy Thanksgiving and then we're going to adjourn. Okay. All right. With that, is there a motion to go into closed session under the attorney-client privilege to discuss pending litigation and the move by Volrath is their support, supported by Werfel? Madam Clerk, will you?